All right, welcome everyone. Tonight is March 28th and this is the Millville Planning Board. We have three members with us tonight, myself and we have Justin, Alan is here and Preston Jaskovic is here. And we have Jack Hunter, intern planner. Right, we'll get started right away. You should have minutes in front of you from February 14th meeting. Everyone's had a moment to look at them. I'll hear a motion to accept those minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
I will second the motion. Sorry about that.
No worries. We'll roll call vote. All in favor. Preston?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
I say aye. All right. Next item on the agenda. Don't make women from tonight. All right, we have required paperwork in front of us for 16 Walnut Street. I believe we have a guest tonight that's gonna walk us through that, Jack?
Margaret's here. She's the engineer representing the owner. I am going to share the screen. And you guys, Lord willing, I can do this correctly. I am not an expert in this. But can you see that?
Yep, yep, we can.
Yeah, okay.
Just as a, as a point of inquiry, can we just define what a approval not required?
Absolutely.
Kind of process is? Okay, thank you.
Um, you know, in, we are, Massachusetts is the only state in the Union that allows what we call approval not required. And as long as, as long as you are on a public way, either accepted by the town or considered a public way by the town clerk or in an approved subdivision that's bonded, you can subdivide your parcel provided you have frontage and lot area without a public human. And in fact, if it meets all that criteria and you don't approve it after 20 days, it's deemed approved without your vote. You know, 99% of the time, they're either, in my experience, they've been either approved or sent back because there's some kind of flaw. But in a rare instance, a board may deny it. If you do deny it, you have to declare it a subdivision and then that gets all messy. I think you'll find when Margaret goes through this, that this is a pretty straightforward request.
Thanks for that, Jack. Justin, do you have other questions or Preston?
No, I guess, I guess my only, my only question would be, you know, certain characteristics that would, you know, not qualify, you know, the subdivision would just, or the, the, you know, redefining of the lots would be insufficient square footage or insufficient frontage?
Yes, and now we're gonna get into some technicalities. Access. If the applicant can't prove access to the parcel, in other words, there's a lake in front of it, or it's a steep cliff that can't be engineered, that is also, and they call that illusory access, that is also a reason to deny it, to deny it. I just had one in Uxbridge, which was on an approved subdivision road. But the road had not been completed and the road was no longer bonded. So in other words, the town didn't have any surety that the road would ever be finished and therefore we did not and did not approve it. So there are some rare instances, Justin.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want me to what, go over this plan a little?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay, just for the record, Margaret Bacon, I'm an engineer with Civil Site Engineering. And, and everything Jack said is correct. Now this lot here, instead of adding a lot line, we're removing a lot line. So presently, there at the corner of Burns, Ab and Walnut Street, I have one lot that's for house number 16. And then adjacent to it, there's another vacant parcel. And they're owned by the same family. But that vacant parcel there at the corner of Burns and Walnut, looking into it, just, it's really not a buildable lot, even though it has access. But because you couldn't get a house, a well and a septic on that lot because of all the wells and septic's already surrounding it. My, my client Samantha and Deonte Monzo, we, we looked at that initially. So what they would like to do, so right now it's two lots, but we would like to remove the, the lot line in between them and make it one lot. And so back to the, the A and R rules and anytime you add or remove a lot line, you have to go before the planning board and it's called, and get the, the planning board to sign off. And basically the, the surveyor who prepared this and stamped this plan is basically saying, this plan here meets all the requirements under the Commonwealth of Mass. So basically this is just the opposite where we're, we're taking two lots and we'd like to make it one.
And I'll chime in for Justin especially. Here it's the opposite. Even if the two parcels as they stand now don't meet zoning, and even if by erasing the lot line, your new parcel still doesn't meet zoning, you made it more conforming. And that is allowed. So I take, you know, there's all kinds of nuances and little things, but in this case, it's a pretty simple thing.
Perfect. Thank you. Jack, the slide that you have up right now shows, kind of shows everything.
Yep.
So Justin, Preston, do you have any questions for Margaret Bacon?
No, I don't have any questions. It seems pretty straightforward.
Right.
I don't have any questions for Margaret. I do have a question maybe for Jack on the application itself. I see that there is, you know, a, you know, a
Sorry, Justin, you cut out. Can you say that again?
Lost him.
Yeah, I think we lost him.
I don't know what, I don't know what his question is.
I have a reason, not a reason, I have a question, just one small question. Is the purpose of combining the lots just for like taxing purposes or?
I think in the future, my client might want to add an addition onto the existing house.
Okay, that makes sense.
I don't, it's not a definite, but right now the, the lots, the way they are, that there's really nothing they can do keeping it separate.
Okay.
So I don't know tax wise if there's a benefit or not.
I was just wondering, because I have the same situation with one of my properties in Millville too. I have two lots that I could combine.
By the way.
Sorry, I'm back.
Oh, there he is, yeah.
So yeah, we couldn't hear your question. If you could just say it again.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, my apologies. I just noticed that this application looks like it's from 2017 and it has a different roster of planning board members in the application. So is that gonna get updated or doesn't matter?
Yeah, you're right. There's nobody on here. Um, I will. Margaret, is that something you can change?
I can change that. It's a really, it's just that second page. Yeah, I can update, I can update that and send it along.
Yes, when you bring in the Mylar, bring in the application with the new roster of board members?
Yeah, yeah, no, just as an FYI, I did drop off the Mylar last week, but so I'll, I'll be able to drop this off tomorrow. That just as she
And have the, and have the clerk stamp it.
Sure.
The application's fine. It's just the signature.
It's just the second page. Got it.
All right, perfect. Jack, for this one, do, do we vote on it or we're just agreeing that it's?
Well, you are agreeing. In this instance, and this will be the only time, any, you don't vote to approve, you vote to endorse.
Gotcha. Okay. So if there are no other questions, I'll hear a motion to endorse the A and R application for 16 Walnut Street.
I will make a motion to endorse the A and R application for 16 Walnut Street.
I will second the motion.
Great. We'll vote by roll call. Justin?
Endorse.
Preston?
Yes.
And I agree. So.
Okay, so now I'd like to spend a few minutes figuring out how do I get, now you guys have to actually sign.
So that I can help with because we, we did pass paperwork a couple of years back to allow, so just I can sign it.
Oh, that's terrific.
Yep.
Okay then.
That was, that was a That was a COVID holdover thing, right?
No, but other boards do that. I've worked with boards. You assign one person, usually someone who's in town a lot and that kind of stuff, or retired. You guys are too young to be retired. Margaret, as soon as Margaret can get the new app, the second sheet into the clerk, then Pam, I'll need you to go in, sign this and also sign the Mylar.
Yep.
Margaret, when will you have this in?
I'll try to get it in today or tomorrow or Wednesday. What's today, Monday? Yeah. Tomorrow or Monday. Because the town hall's only open till one, correct?
On Wednesday.
I'll have it, I'll have it there by Wednesday morning, okay?
Okay, Pam, can you get there on Thursday?
I can get down Thursday morning.
Perfect. And make sure after you sign it, leave the Mylar with Sherry up front and the application goes to Diane.
Okay.
With a copy for me. So I would say, Margaret, just to make it safe, Thursday afternoon before four, you can come in and pick up the Mylar.
Okay, that, that's great.
And just for the board, what will happen is they don't have to do this, but since it's their, their subdivision, so to speak, they will record the Mylar at the Registry of Deed. And then once that's done, eventually the assessors gets it and then it's gospel. I have run into instances where they'll do this action and they never record it and then it never takes effect. Your vote doesn't do it, their recording does it. So we're learning.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bye now.
Bye.
Thank you.
All right. Jack, you don't have to share your screen anymore.
I know, I gotta figure out what to do. There it is. There.
All right. Back to the agenda. So just a few other items tonight. Jack, I know you have an update on the planner search.
Yes, as I told you guys, we were thinking of trying to get a grad school intern to kind of follow me around and help me out over the summer. And maybe 10 hours, maybe 12, and then probably less in the fall semester and spring semester with a promise that if, you know, they perform well, that they could take over for me after my second year. And low and behold, we had a great Zoom meeting with the head professor at Clark University, which is a wonderful university and, and their planning department is excellent. We developed a flyer and a job ad. And that was sent to them last week. And then, you know, I even remember at grad school, you know, the professors will start telling their students and hopefully we'll get some resumes and we'll have somebody hanging around. And I definitely, in Millville and, and in Mendon, I have work for them that they can help with that I just can't get to.
Yep.
So I'm excited. We'll see what happens.
That's awesome.
I will add too, that I did talk to all three town administrators about that. They're fine. And they've all put monies in their budget for next year fiscal year to handle both me and them, the intern. It's not a lot for the intern, yeah.
Perfect. Yeah, that's exciting, Jack. I think it'll be a a good thing to, to mix it up a little bit, try something different. And what an awesome opportunity this would be for the right person.
Yep, yep.
Right. What else do you have, Jack? Any other pending things to discuss?
Yeah, I don't have an application or anything, but I, I had a couple interesting phone calls. I did get a call. I, you know, sometimes people don't want to tell me much, whatever. This was either an abutter, interested citizen, or maybe a developer who's asking a lot of questions about Millville Estates. And I have not heard anything from anybody in months. As you may recall, sometime in the fall, I can't remember when, it was auctioned off because of foreclosure. And that day I got a call from somebody from Rhode Island who said he bought it. He won the auction. And he had a ketrillion questions and I sent him what I had. And though I've been finding even more as I dig around, but anyway, I have not heard from him since. I assume he owns it. I don't know. And then last Wednesday, I talked to this person who asked a lot of questions. I don't know what they're gonna do, but you know, I don't get a lot of inquiries in Millville, but I'll keep you, something's gonna happen there. Let's put it that way. You know, the economy for residential is so hot that something is probably gonna happen. I'm surprised we haven't heard since, but. More interestingly, I talked about three times with this guy. He is part owner of two, hold on one second. I had it written down.
240, I think you said.
240 Main Street. It's a garage, pretty close to town hall. It's a fairly big sized garage. And he went to the planning board in 2017. He showed me it. And received a special permit to operate his garage at that location. He then went and dragged a construction trailer onto the property, knocked the wheels off. And that got the building commissioner's attention, who went there and said, you're gonna have to go back to the planning board. So I talked to this guy a couple times. I talked to the building commissioner today. And, you know, he, the deal is this, is that if he's gonna have this be his office, then he is going to have to have a bathroom and obviously potable water and a septic system. I talked to him again today, this afternoon, and he said he has both those in the big garage, the existing garage. So I told him, well, then he needs to call the Board of Health and find out whether that suffices as far as they're concerned. And I have had one instance I can think of where if the proximity of the two buildings is close enough, you can, they can be used for a bathroom and potable water. I, I don't know what the law is, nor do I know what the Board of Health will say, but he said he would do that. And that he would like, and if they're okay with it, as is, then I recommend that he gets a minor modification from you to place that trailer there and occupy it. And then some of the questions were, would be for me, is, is the Board of Health gonna put that in writing? It's okay? I don't know. Is there any building code issues? I don't know the site well enough. I'd have to go look at it, that kind of stuff. But until he calls me back, I think that's the way it's gonna be. You know, I told him, well, you might have to have a well and a septic system. And he said, well, it's only a temporary construction office. So I said, well, that's not what you told me before. Don't be cute, you know, come on. And he fessed up, so. We'll see.
What about power on something like that?
Yeah, and, and he, that's what triggered it too. Good point, Preston. The building commissioner told me he tried to get an electrical permit and he won't give it to him until this is resolved. And I think that's a why.
That would be one of the safety concerns.
Right, 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 right. So it's that kind of stuff, you know? I don't know how much, we could be very technical with this guy. We could, I just don't know the side driven by there a bunch of times. I wanna go look at it. I think you guys should pay attention a little bit. The trailer's there.
Yep.
I assume it's not going anywhere. So see if that site looks operable and safe. Are there any issues? We might wanna have the fire and police department chime in. I, I don't know. I, I just don't know the site well enough. But that's what I told him and he seemed fine with it. He, he'll work, he'd say they'll work with us, so.
All right. Well, thanks for filling us in on that, Jack. And perhaps we can all make it a point to kind of drive by and take a quick look.
Yeah, and he said he'd like to get on your next agenda, which is April 11. And I told him, let's go to the Board of Health first and then yes, that's more than possible. I will also tell you guys, I am going away on Wednesday to much warmer areas than here. We're going to Florida, see my sister, my nephews and whatever else for a week. But I'll be, I'll be available. I can't get off the, the computer sometimes. So you'll, it'll be like I never left, I hope.
Thanks for letting us know, Jack.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else this evening?
I have a, I have a question. I drive by a property that we have given a special permit to for dumpsters on the premises. And I'm just wondering about enforcement when they're not using the dumpsters or like the dumpsters are full and there's still a lot of like, you know, material or waste, you know, like on the property and not in the dumpsters? Like what, what happens there?
Yeah, I can tell you, well, first off, the appeal period isn't over, but they're gonna pass that. And then they have to record the decision, but then he can start doing what he said he's gonna do. The way we wrote the decision, there can't be any refuse in the dumpsters or in the area. The Board of Health told me that they were gonna be all over that, watching that. And I think it's, you know, it's a small town, Justin, and I'm gonna ask you guys to help kind of drive by there all the time and check it out. And if you think there's a violation, you let me know. We'll get the building commissioner and/or the Board of Health involved. Maybe the fire department, probably not. But, and then we shut them down.
Do you know the prop, do you know the property I'm talking about?
Yeah. One we just approved?
No, I'm not, no, I'm not. I'm not, I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about 56 Main Street.
Oh, I'm sorry. What property then? I don't know.
I mean, I, I feel, I, I feel hesitant to, you know, to, to say in an open meeting without, you know, maybe gathering some more information. If, I mean, does that make sense? Or is this the opportunity to like, to talk about it?
That's up to you. If, if you wanted to do it anonymously or not on the air, then that's an individual action and I would advise you to call the Board of Health.
Okay, I mean, is it, is it something where like, you know, maybe we should go back to the paperwork and just draw up the special permit parameters and then kind of like with the eye test, kind of see whether or not they're in compliance or not?
Yeah, typically what would happen would be a board member would let me know. And if I don't know, like this one, I would look at the decision. I'd go out there, maybe have the building commissioner or the Board of Health come with me or go out there by themselves, see if there's a violation and then they take it from there. I mean, it's possible the planning board could ultimately take action and put a cease and desist. But it's usually the building commissioner or the Board of Health that would end up ultimately doing that. But I don't know. It's too hypothetical. That's, if you wanna do, if you wanna talk to me offline, we can talk about that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, there's no, yeah, I would rather line up, you know, my ducks in a row before, you know, publicly, you know, naming something.
Well, then either call me when you feel comfortable and we'll go from there.
Oh, okay. Yeah, not a problem. And, you know, I, I can certainly meet up with you at the local. And, um, you know, I, I can certainly meet up with you at the location, you know, um.
Because the next two Wednesdays, I'm not here, so.
Yeah, no, no, that's all right, that's all right, no, no worries. You enjoy, you enjoy your time down south.
Well, it's, anything's warmer than today.
I know, I saw snow today.
I did too, we were walking the dogs and there was snow. That's all I got.
Anything else? All right.
Uh, nope, that's all I had.
Perfect, um.
Uh, n- next meeting, April eleventh.
Next meeting is April the eleventh, correct?
Right now I don't have anything, but I don't know if this guy is gonna come, come in, even if he wants to talk to you, I think it's a good idea, if, if he's still interested, yeah.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Pam, do you know, do you know when the town elections are?
Is it on there, is it on this website listed? Let me look real quick. Town election, April fourth.
April fourth.
April fourth.
Okay, so would, so would that, so would that April eleventh meeting be with the new board? Potentially, or still us?
My opinion, if you are not written in and, and/or no one else is written in, then we've got a serious problem because we've still got three members. But as you know, Bill Coop doesn't show up, we may have to call him in if there's business to conduct and we can't do any special permits.
Yep.
So, I'm gonna suggest, please, if you wanna participate and no one else is running, just get five or six signatures, you got four, right, three right here. Just saying.
Yeah, I'll, I, I mean, I'll, um, I'll, I'll contact some people, um, and, uh, and have them write, write my name in.
It really puts the board in clagmire, I'll tell you that.
Yeah, no, didn't, didn't intend it, didn't intend it.
No, 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 it's, no, no. That's not your fault, it's just the way it is. But I've seen people get written in a bigger town with like ten votes, eleven, maybe less, for all I know. But that's a clerk thing, not a Jack thing.
Gotcha. So if you're watching this planning board meeting, write in Justin Allen for planning board.
You can't do that, you can't do that.
I didn't say that.
It's okay, nobody's watching.
Watch this, believe me. Okay, are we done?
Yes, I believe we are. If there's nothing else tonight, um, I'll hear a motion to close the meeting.
I make a motion to close the meeting.
I'll second the motion to close the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Hey, guys.
Have a good night.
All right.